Notice of a public meeting of the City of Brownsville, of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article V, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a workshop, an executive session, and a regular meeting on Tuesday, September 6, 2011, at 5:30, 5:45, and 6:00 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Workshop A, Discussion Regarding a Resaca Restoration Project.
Okay, thank you. I invited Mr. Joe Boswell and a group of children here because I know our PUB has a project going on and our mayor also has expressed interest in restoring our resacas. So at a Brownsville Beautification Committee meeting, Joe was telling me about this project and I thought it'd be great for him to come before the Commission and tell us about it.
Yeah, thanks for having me, Mayor, Commission. On behalf of the Living Way students, do stand up and identify yourself, please. These are our team leaders with the project. What we're doing, we are Rio Bravo Wildlife Institute and the students are with Living Way Leadership Academy. We received a grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife and Service Learning Texas to do a restoration project on some local habitat. And the first thing we did with this grant, we went to, my slideshow's not playing. That's right. The first thing, we went to Dallas-Fort Worth and talked with some biologists and some service learning experts on different restoration methods. The kids learned how to take water samples, learned about invasive species. And they were definitely a hit there. We came from the furthest away in Texas. Everyone else was from the metro Dallas area. Someone was from around Lebik and we came all the way from down here. And the biologists there were thrilled to have us because they know the importance of our wetlands here. So this project basically is going to be a year-long. We're going to record baseline data on five resaca sites and then involve the community and do some restoration projects to see how our efforts affect the resacas and hopefully make them more beautiful and accessible places for tourists and local citizens to enjoy. The reason why I'm here today is to appeal to you for future appeals and either the me or possibly my young associates approaching you for some assistance in this project. And this can be a project that is just limited to these five resacas and these five projects or it could be a citywide project and initiative launching some of the plans set out in United Brownsville in the environmental and park section. That's what I'm hoping for. We can break this down into three steps. The first one, we need to figure out what we have in our wetlands, what sort of problems and what sort of public access is already there. We need to, when we devise a plan of action, it's real important to us to get the community involved. One, because people benefit from volunteerism and outdoor activity just for obvious reasons. And two, because that's what's going to keep our natural resources sustainable, with people taking ownership of them and learning about them. So they'll take care of them themselves in years to come when we're no longer spearheading these initiatives. And the last one is closing the loop, making this make sense to us as far as education and tourism and getting people to actually use these things. Conservation by recreation, if you will. This is important, obviously I'm preaching to the choir. This is our city's backup water supply. We have a very unique ecosystem here with some endangered species. We also want to figure out how healthy our resacas are for public use and what sort of natural resources are marketable nationwide and worldwide for people to come visit Brownsville. We're going to start with five sites around the city. Two of them, we have one at Cabler Park, which is a great opportunity for some nature trails, some interactive nature trails. One at Lincoln Park, there's a natural wetlands there, which is actually where we met Ms. Lotta from Living Way Academy. She was there checking out our community gardens and that's how we found them to work together on this grant. And eventually, after working on these five sites, like I said, a couple of them are with the Parks and Recreation Department, one's at UTB, one's by the Botanical Gardens. And eventually, we'd like to, these protocols we're establishing apply to resacas around the whole city. We're working with, in addition to ourselves, and working with UTB. It's going to handle some of the more rigorous scientific work and the kids are going to get some good mentoring opportunities from students and teachers at the university with water testing and figuring out what native plants to plant. And ultimately, like I said, we'd like to get the whole community involved in this process. I think that's very important. We're going to, one of the first things we're going to find out is what sort of invasive species problems we have, what sort of pollution problems we have, what the sources of them are, how we can mitigate it, what sort of animals and plants are there already and who uses our resacas and where. One of the more innovative things we're working on is ecological data collection app for iPhones and Androids. And our kids are going to use that to collect data from the resacas that we're studying and it's going to record what plants and animals you see, water quality. There's going to be some things in there about what sort of public access points are in there. And our kids will be using this along with some teachers and students from UTB. And hopefully, this app will be something that can be used by the whole community if they want to contribute to the health of our resacas. And it's going to go into a large database that's going to be, hopefully, a reference point for any future restoration projects with resacas. We're working on this as we speak. As I said, it's real important for us to get the community involved. Education is not just a buzzword we throw around. This is actually, it ties into conservation because as these students work on these resacas, they're going to be the ones that are going to be taken care of in the future. We're trying to get, I'd like to find out with the help of some of you guys what pre-existing efforts are already being done on resaca restorations and resaca projects in general and have us be put in touch with them and kind of work as a team. We can all be cogs in the same mission here. We're going to have a lot of invasive species removal projects and trash pickups. And we're also, one of the things that Josh, one of our students is in charge of, is building a hoop house over at Lincoln Park to grow native plants to re-vegetate some of the resacas. Another thing we'd like to do is figure out in our different points what these resources can be used for, whether it's kayaking or hiking or bird watching. One of our sites is, we're calling it the La Posada Reserve, recently acquired by the city. And there's some very rare and endangered plant life there. And so that'd be kind of an example of something that'd be very delicate and used very sparsely. Other places would be great for a park bench or a public bird blind being able to use all the time by the community. The initial phase of this project, these five sites, is going to be about a year-long project upon which the students will have made an impact on a few different resacas and began that data collection protocol I mentioned earlier. And this is probably, this last section is what will need the most help from the city with is marketing our resources and creating paths and bird blinds and things like that to make sure our restoration efforts don't go unenjoyed. This is beneficial, one, to have resources for students like Living Way students and everyone else in the community to go learn about our ecosystem. And it's also a potential economic draw. There's only a handful of birding destinations in Brownsville right now. And a lot of these resacas, untaken care of, are potential hotspots where people will come from miles around to see something. We're hoping to achieve with this, like I said, a method in which to restore resacas in the future and a whole list of new sites that we can market through the chamber and other avenues, hopefully put Brownsville on top of places to visit for eco-tourists and birders. Again, I'm here to appeal for some other sources of help and assistance and collaboration. And we're probably going to be coming to you in the future for different things. For instance, if there's a littering problem in a certain place, we may need the city's help putting some trash cans there. Just different creative ways like that to get us all on the same page. That's pretty much it. Do you guys have any questions?
That's great. I think, Commissioner, thank you for bringing Joe, but I think Commissioner Rose is about to jump out of her skin because it's right down her alley.
You can invite us for the next one.
I'm sorry?
You can invite us for the next one.
Yes. I want to hear from you regularly and I hope you can present to us, resaca by resaca, your progress. I think that's great. As commissioners, I think we'd all love to go out and watch you work. So if you have a schedule of when you're going to be at different locations, we'd love, I'm speaking for everyone, but I'm sure we could all spare a few moments to learn along with your students. I'm thinking about the resaca restoration program that the PUB is about to start and whether or not you would interact with Dr. Jude Benavides, who would be very much in this same realm. And then the resacas that you've chosen to start with, some, like La Posada, does have, you're not going to, there's nobody's personal home there. You could theoretically create a trail or a path that goes around the resaca. I understand from planning that if you follow the path from La Posada, you can go in one direction to Morningside Park and the other direction all the way to the river. So I would be interested in y'all's planning and thoughts as you get into that stage to be able to interact and help us to create those beautiful paths and walks.
Most definitely. We have, we are working with Mr. Benavides, by the way. And as far as those paths, Commissioner Moore and I once discussed sort of a network of birding destinations and paths that this initiative will be a big part of that. These five restorations, maybe not all five of them, but at least a couple of them are going to contribute to a larger network of eco-tourist and destinations in Brownsville.
Well done.
Very well done. Let me suggest something. You got Dr. Birchfield back there, Pat with the zoo. And by the way, I happened to be around on Saturday and I saw those 18,000 people that were showing up to eat 10,000 cupcakes. I'm sorry, but I didn't see the 469. I do want to tell you, Pat, it was a wonderful sight to watch the City of Brownsville get so excited. And I know you had people from all over the valley. I was at the farmer's market and I couldn't find a parking space. But other than that, I was thrilled to know how much people were excited about that. This project, young people from Living Way, is something you need to get involved with. And I think one of the most important parts that you've said today, besides the project being a wonderful project, is to involve the community. The community needs to take ownership. This is extremely important. And somehow or another, I think we need to kind of develop commissioners a way of making a task force which you as commissioners can be part of the leadership and get together with PUB and get together with Joe, get together with Dr. Birchfield. Do it collectively. I think that's one of the other things that we have a challenge to do in this town is to start working together as a community and not have different efforts going at different times and not coordinating it. Because I think collectively, we'll get a whole lot more done. And whereas you're starting like in Lincoln Park, I think PUB had the idea, or at least talking to the Corps of Engineers, is talking over there at Pat's place, over there by the zoo, where the city cemetery is, and also Dean Porter Park, mainly because of the visibility that we're going to have. But that doesn't prevent all of you from getting together and working together and coming together for the benefit of Brownsville. I think it's wonderful and I love to see these young people involved. Guys, you are the future. You can keep those smiles going. Because that's what it's going to take. You've got to understand, that young man behind you with the little beard, no, don't turn around, Birchfield. That man right there, 40 years ago, got involved with the zoo and he's done wonders. And hopefully, some of you guys went to the zoo over the weekend. But it was a wonderful sight and I think that's what we need to do, starting now, okay? So thank you very much.
Amen, thanks a lot. Thanks for the talk, Commissioner Viadell. The kids loved it.
Anytime. Thank you.
It's now 5:47. Executive session?
Executive session. Attorney consultation pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code in connection with pending litigation styled and numbered, BFFA Local Number 970 versus Brownsville, Cost Number 2011 DCL 5738 P 357 Judicial District Court, Cameron County, Texas.
Make a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's going to work.
Madam Secretary? Are we ready for the regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay. If we can all stand, and Mr. Barretta, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Your will.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Brett?
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this nation that we're blessed to live in. And Lord, we ask you to continue to comfort the families of the 9/11 victims as we come up on that 10th year anniversary. Lord, we ask you to continue to help them put their lives together. We thank you so much that our country has not had any more large attacks. And we ask you to continue to lead those that are responsible for keeping us safe. Lord, we thank you for our neighbors to the south and we ask you to continue to lead and guide them. Bless them with the security that they need and desire and continue to help the people on the east coast put their lives together. And Lord, for this meeting here tonight, leading guide, the leaders here before us, give them divine inspiration, wisdom, and discernment as they make the decisions for the City of Brownsville, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Reverend, would you go ahead? There's an announcement he would like to make with relation to some of the disasters and stuff that are happening in the east coast and he needs a little bit of help. So maybe you could enlighten him.
There were a lot of foreign exchange students from many countries around the world that were planning to go to homes on the east coast. But many of those homes that they were going to be hosted in are no more. And so the organization is diverting a lot of those students here to Texas. And at this point, we still need homes for six of those students. Pastor Joseph O'Bell is the point man for that. And the city manager's office will be taking calls from people that are interested in hosting somebody and connecting those people with Pastor Joe O'Bell. So, and keep in mind, these people qualified for these programs. So they are the future leaders of their countries. And it's probably some of the best foreign relations our country could get.
Well, thank you, Brett. And Brett, for anybody who's interested, we'll contact the city manager's office. And be it known that it's a semester or is it?
It's a full school year.
It's a full school year.
Yes. They will leave right after this school year is over.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor's report?
I was going to give my report. Was it John, did you? No, it was Jessica, I'm sorry. Commissioner, go ahead.
I was lucky enough to be asked by Roman Betes, who is a, he has muscular dystrophy. I was honored to be asked to represent the City of Brownsville answering phones during this MDA telethon that was on, it was on Channel 4 this weekend, on Sunday. And I was honored. So I got all my stuff, I went over there and I answered phones for about two hours. And I was amazed by all of the calls coming in from Brownsville. We were able to raise, here in the valley, $181,000. Amazing, amazing. Muscular dystrophy is a very common thing here in the valley. And we need to pull together, we take care of our own and we protect each other. And this was amazing that we got so many calls from Brownsville. As hard as times are right now, everybody opened up their hearts and their wallets. The Brownsville firefighters yearly, yearly, stand on the curb in the heat and collect in the boot. Citizens, we all stop, we throw our dollars in. They collected 15, over $15,000 here in Brownsville alone. So these men, absolutely amazing, absolutely amazing. I'm very proud of them, very, very proud of them. And the organization and the children that this money gets to, we are amazing. And we need to continue being, looking out for each other. Thank you.
Okay, so that's my report. Anyway, the next presentation is a Brownsville Tennis Center update. Charlie?
I'm going to introduce Mr. McNeil, who's got the expertise on tennis.
Welcome, Jim.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Martinez, City Commissioners, Mr. Cabler, Mr. Gonzalez, the City Secretary's Office. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I'm Jim McNeil with the Brownsville Tennis Association. And basically, since many of you are newly elected, the purpose of the presentation really is to acquaint you with one of the jewels of the city's parks inventory, the Brownsville Tennis Complex. How it came to be, where it is now, and basically where we're headed. And it really seems to me that it's really a great idea for the city to allow tennis players to run a tennis center. We're well-connected. A little bit of history, the Brownsville Tennis Association was formed in the mid-1990s with the idea to advance the game of tennis. We first held some of our fun tennis tournaments at Hannah High School Courts and with the idea eventually to be able to develop a tennis complex. We then began dialogue with the then-city commissioners and a CEO from the Texas section of the United States Tennis Association, who did come here to Brownsville to see if we could actually build a tennis center that would become a reality. We had no funds. All of the available grants wanted matching funds. Then along came the Hudson family and donated five acres of land. There, we had something of value to deal with and it began to mushroom. With some of the heavy duty fundraising on a part of the city and a part of the Brownsville Tennis Association and a partnership that we developed, a 16-court tennis center became a reality. And I remember the day that we opened and a conversation with Mr. Carl Chilton, who was one of the main fundraisers, on opening day, I made the remark, "Well, now that we have it, what are we going to do with it?" Well, the old adage really kicked in, "You build it, they will come." And come they did. Since opening in April of 2001, the United States Tennis Association has awarded us with Tennis Facility of the Year and we are truly one of the best tennis centers south of Waco. The player usage that we calculated since opening, we have some 90,000 to 100,000 players have played on our courts. When we first opened, if you wanted to be in a league, you had to go to Harlingen. Now, we have nearly, yearly, we have between 12 and 14 league teams involving 150 to 175 players who play other valley teams. And several, once you win with the valley, you go on to state. And if you win at state, you go on at nationals. And we can proudly say, we have had some that did that. And our junior teams have also played in the nationals. And not only have they won, but they have also received sportsmanship's award and team leadership awards. A great bunch of kids. We have donated the courts annually to a charity tournament for a young high school player who was tragically killed in a car crash, Debbie Powers. We've donated to school groups and programs and for, including some overflow from some of the tournaments that they have. One high school used our courts for a full month as their courts were not functional. We're now very much into what they call 10 and under tennis. And I know some of you may have seen the advertising on television of 10 and under tennis, which is really great for kids, 10 and under. It's a whole different program with a lighter set of tennis rackets and a kind of a Nerf tennis ball and dead tennis balls because they don't bounce so high as they advertise on television. It's a great program for kids. Since opening, we have done 11 professional tennis tournaments, 10 men's and one women's. For the 10th anniversary tournament, to kick off our tournament, we had here, they visited here, Mr. Brian Early, who is the chief umpire for the US Open. And the US Open, you can now see, it's on television right now. And if you look in the right place, you'd be able to see Mr. Early prominently displayed on the court. He's a down-to-earth guy, he's really a great guy. He even took all the Brownsville Tennis Association members out to dinner. And also, he is in charge of all pro-circuit tennis for the United States and very deeply involved in Davis Cup. And when he was here, we had a chance to talk to him and he has some great stories about how tennis is organized and about some of the individual players. It was really a kick. For the pro tournaments, all of you, I gave the office a program book for the tennis tournament and I marked on it with a red marker that all of the players, yeah, there we go. Robert Kendrick, he played here, he's from Fresno. And the following pages, yeah, Michael McLune played here, Tim Smiechek. And yeah, Ryan Harrison, he was given a, I think he trained a lot at Duke's Tennis Ranch in New Braunfels. And he played here when he was 16 years old and signed in as a pro. And when you do that, you can no longer play high school or college tennis because he's a professional. Jordan Cox, very nice young man. Ryan Harrison was given a wild card to play into the US Open this last year and he made it into the second round. So he's a pretty strong player. Also, somewhere further down, there's a, next page, Donald Young. Ryan Sweeting played here. Donald Young just got into the third round by beating Chela, the Spanish clay court specialist. He beat him in three sets. So, you know, Brownsville's done okay with some of the young people that have played through our pro tournaments. Many of these kids come here from all over the world and we've had as many as 30 countries represented. In this last year, we had 30 and we have had as many as 38. Some 120 players come here, including 20 officials. And many of them go on to play into the major world tournaments. Wimbledon, I counted 25 players. And again, in the US Open, I counted 25 players that are playing in the US Open that have played through our tournament here. So it's quite exciting to watch kids like Donald Young playing on national television. And I know the city is interested in what we've done with our pro tournaments and how it affects, impacts the city's economy. This last pro tournament, we brought in approximately $30,000 to hotels, which equated to about $3,000 in hotel occupancy tax, $20,000 to restaurants, $4,000 to gas stations, and some additional monies for car rentals, airlines, and taxicabs. We've also done several, what they call tennis on campus, which is almost like an intramural type tournament that has brought five or six teams down here from other cities like San Antonio, Houston, Laredo, and for several nights stay, which included 40 to 50 players and their families. So that also had an impact. We do market Brownsville valley-wide, we market it statewide, and we market Brownsville nationally. We do market Brownsville valleywide, we market it statewide, and we market Brownsville nationally. And with the event of our pro-tennis tournament, we actually market Brownsville worldwide, which is one of the few sports organizations that does so. That's basically all I really have to say. And gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen, do you have any questions I've made?
A couple of questions. I understand the association or this event receives approximately thirty thousand annually from hotel occupancy revenue?
Yeah, to hotels, right.
Yes, is that funding to host some of these players, or it's funding?
Well, the players come here, like Donald Young, he brought his mother when he played here. He played here when he was sixteen years old. He was then the number-one world-ranked junior, and they paid their own hotel room.
They did, so we don't, we don't pay them to?
No, we don't pay, we have to pay the officials rooms. But the hotels have been very kind to us and have comped the rooms for the officials.
So the funding is to place advertising and publications, or?
Yeah, these players pay their own way.
No, 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 no. The funding you receive from the hotel occupancy tax revenue?
Right.
Okay. You use that to purchase advertising in various publications, is that what it's used for?
Well, we build websites and whatnot to try to encourage players to come here, sure.
Okay, so what publications are we advertising in to promote this?
We haven't really advertised in any basic publications. We do advertise in The Herald when the tournament is on.
Jim, she's asking, what do you do with the thirty thousand that the city gives you? That's what she's asking.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing you.
She's asking, what do you do with the thirty thousand that the city gives you for the event? That's what she's asking.
Well, the thirty thousand that are basically given to us is for daily operations, okay? It, it's, what should we say, it's our break-even money. Because it's, it's not, it's not cheap to run a tennis program. We do collect money for court fees, we do collect some from the pros' lessons, but still, the balancing is the thirty that we get from the hotel occupancy tax. That keeps us on an even keel.
Any other questions?
I was a tennis player in high school, and as a matter of fact, when this facility opened, it was somewhere that I spent many, 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 many hours at. So it is a very positive things for Brownsville. And I don't play tennis anymore, but I wish I had time for it. But it is very positive, and there are, I have seen the very good things that come out of it, so good job with that.
You did start a program for the young kids, right?
Well, yeah, the new ten-and-under program is for kids ten, six to ten years old, right?
And that's a new program?
It's an exciting thing. In fact, we've been invited, October twenty-second, we got a call from Washington, D.C., from the National Hispanic Health. They're going to put a program on October twenty-second at Dean Porter Park for sports and health, and they asked us to be a small part of it. And we're going to do some of that ten-and-under tennis for that.
Is that a free program, ten-and-under? Ten-and-under is a free program?
Yeah, it's a free program for kids, yeah. In fact, one of the people that's running it is the head coach for Rivera High School tennis team, and he has several volunteer assistants. And it's exciting, they love it, the kids love it.
I've been to the tournament tw- two or three times now, and it's very impressive, very exciting.
Well, it's exciting to be involved, and it's exciting to watch these people go on and play in some of these major tournaments. And we also had one kid that, are you all familiar with the TAPS District, which is basically some of the parochial school?
Right.
One kid that trained at our tennis center through St. Joe was number-one in the state. So the program's here in Brownsville is working.
It's very exciting.
Very good. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to be here. You all have a great evening, okay?
You too.
Proyecto Juan Diego?
Yeah, Proyecto Juan Diego, I think that's, I see all the wonderful people that are involved. Sister Phyllis, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brenda Garza, and I'm the Development Director with Proyecto Juan Diego. Allow me to introduce, I brought a couple of people with me, Sister Phyllis Peters, the Executive Director, Lupita Sanchez, one of our program coordinators, and Linda Gonzalez, who is one of our fundraising volunteers. Our purpose today is to shed some light on a few things that you may know or may not know about our organization. Proyecto Juan Diego is an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization located in the heart of Cameron Park at twenty-two sixteen Eduardo Street. We were incorporated originally in two thousand and three and have worked at our current location since two thousand and seven. Our mission is to empower low-income families to be healthy and self-sufficient community members through educational programs, family activities, and preventative health services. Much of what we do, the main thrust of our organization revolves around education. We offer English classes, GED classes, citizenship classes, an elderly program, parenting classes, which include a program that we call, it's one of our favorites, Playing with a Purpose, where we offer mothers of preschool-aged children the tools to educate their children while they engage them in playful activities. This project is currently funded in part by the United Way of Southern Cameron County, so we are a United Way agency. We also offer diabetic education, aerobics classes, nutrition, cooking classes, stress management, and an after-school tutorial program. Most recently, we started a community garden project where we're teaching residents how to grow their own food, and we're encouraging them to participate in the local farmer's market project. Each year, anywhere from four thousand to five thousand residents, either from Cameron Park or from wherever, because our doors are open to everyone, walk through our doors seeking help or benefit from some of the community outreach work that we do with the Promotoras. Promotoras are community outreach workers. If you've never heard that term before, it's something that's catching on, it's very popular nationwide. Diabetes awareness, however, for us, is one of our main priorities. We conduct A1(c) screenings for diabetics, and we host a diabetic support group for family members of those afflicted with this disease. The difference between our work with diabetes compared to some other places that might offer similar services is that we not only teach residents how to maintain their condition and to control this disease, but we also follow up after the fact to see how they're doing. In two thousand and ten, the Promotoras Healthcare Program assisted a total of one thousand one hundred and sixty members of the community, working with our partners like Su Clínica Familiar, the UT School of Public Health, and the Brownsville Community Health Center. I realize, we realize, that you can walk into many places in Brownsville that offer diabetic screening and GED classes, but few places offer all these services for everyone for free and under the same roof. Proyecto Juan Diego is funded through grants and fundraising, but unfortunately, drastic cuts at the state level have left us desperately short on general operating funds. At this time, if I could have her start the PowerPoint. If this PowerPoint goes by very quickly, I take full responsibility. I thought I could put together a two-minute program here, and I wanted it to go fast, so if it hurts your eyes, I'm sorry for that. At this time, I'd like to have our Executive Director, Sister Phyllis Peters, just say a few words, and then I'll close it up here.
Well, the only thing I wanted to really say was, you know, I'm more concerned, instead of the statistics, I'm more concerned about how we walk and accompany the low-income people to be healthy, stable, and productive citizens of our own community. And I have a quotation that I just wanted to read, because it really makes me reflect a lot about ourselves, and I think you'd all say the same. "The moral measure of any society or community can be gauged by how it treats its weakest members." And I think we all have to reflect on that a little bit, and I guess this is one of our aims, to really accompany them so they understand the systems that we live in, the systems of the school system, the healthcare system, and just the basic value systems.
In closing, and I'll take questions in just a sec, but in closing, I believe I speak for all of us here when I say that we would really like the commission to consider helping us with any 501(c)(3) funding that you might have for that purpose. We're just throwing it out there. And also, we would very much like to invite you to our next fundraiser, which is called Noche de Colores. And it is a colorful Mexican celebration to benefit Proyecto Juan Diego. It's set for seven P.M. Saturday, September twenty-fourth, at the Valley International Country Club. Tickets are fifty dollars each and seventy-five per couple. We'll have fun, music, dancing, and as I was telling Sister, when you go out and you try to plan a party for two to three hundred people, and you only have one dollar in your pocket, well, then I think you're doing God's work. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. We really appreciate this time, and we're hoping that you'll consider attending our event. At this time, if there are any questions, we welcome any questions, comments you might have.
Brenda, you are doing God's work, all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Before we go to the Employee of the Month, Mr. Kebler, Commissioner Yarrial had a question?
Sure. I had a, I met with Mr. Robert Lucio, who runs a business in District Four and knows a lot of residents that are, have been affected by the border wall. So I had invited him, and somehow there's a mix-up, and he didn't get onto the agenda, but I got permission and he came to present.
Thank you, John. Mayor, City Commissioner, thank you for squeezing me in, I really appreciate it. Pete, how are you? Been a long time, huh? I used to be six foot three, one-fifty, didn't recognize me. Gravity's taken over, you know? Pretty much taken over. I, I come here, I really appreciate you, John, for letting me come in and talking to the new commission. And in two thousand and six, we, we got the border wall, border fence, anything that you want to call it, we, we got it in Brownsville. And I don't want to go back to two thousand and six and fight those old fights, whether you like it or you agree with it or not. I mean, I don't think that that's an issue anymore. The issue is that we do have it. It exists, and people live behind that border fence. We have people today, tonight, that will, you know, that sleep uncomfortably, knowing that the security on that side of the fence is not as good on that side of things that it would be on this side of the fence. So there's a, we want to, I want to make sure that we don't go back in time and fight those old fights, but as we move forward, five years after that, we have, we have some problems back there, and I'd like to come back, I want to tell you right now that I'd like to come back and present it a little bit more detailed than I am tonight, but we have security problems back there. And really want to, want to address the city, ask the city, you know, and the city manager, chief, what exactly the role is of city, the city police department on the Mexican side of the fence. I'd like to, to address that, if there's a task force with the Border Patrol, with the Sheriff's Department, with the state police, and to see if there's anything that is going on there. Also, want to bring up the fact of security, that right now, we are seeing that Border Patrol and Homeland Security is really patrolling the fence line in times of, when there's, when there's problems in Mexico, they're going to be patrolling the fence line and not the river. So anybody that's on that side, of course, is going to be in harm's way, and we're very concerned with that. I'm talking to several residents, people that live on the Mexican side of the fence, like I say, and right now is just a crucial time, and we'd like to start addressing some of these problems that we have with the city, with the county, with the state, and start bringing this up, because it's been five years now. And the things that we talked about back then, some of the concerns that people had were valid concerns, and they're coming true now. One is security, also property values and other things like that. So we need to address that, we need to start talking about it, and we haven't talked about it lately. I think it's very legitimate that we start, that we start moving forward. Where are we going to go as a city, I guess? And this great commission today that I see could start making decisions for the future of that property, because right now, it is, it's becoming a wasteland back there. We have a buffer zone between the fence line and the river, and it's, it's going to become less and less populated. People cannot sell their properties or move in or out, and, you know, we, we need to talk about that. And I hope that this, the time that we had today will, will get us to start doing that. I think that, that, that I'm here today to ask, you know, the city to please to form a committee or to, to call people in to start addressing those needs.
Mr. Lucio, I appreciate your time, and we, we apologize for not putting it on the agenda, and Commissioner Yarrial had asked for this, but I don't want to go too far in. Perhaps maybe Commissioner Yarrial, you will head a task force to get with Mr. Lucio, and y'all get with the city manager and with the chief of police, and maybe you can present us with a report. Thank you very much.
Sure, just one more thing, Robert, you wanted to invite people to a meeting?
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna have a meeting of some of the residents, and of course, I run a business on that side, and we're getting together on the seventeenth at the Ford Brown Golf Course in the clubroom. And we're going to discuss some of the personal problems that are having back there, mostly to them and security. We also want to look at, as a future, to help property owners on that side of the fence, looking at, you know, possibly an enterprise zone or something like that, that will help with property values and will start revitalizing those areas, because they, they will just die out. It'll be a dead zone back there.
So it's the seventeenth at what time?
I'm sorry?
The seventeenth at what time?
It's the seventeenth at ten A.M.
Ten A.M.
There at the clubhouse, and we invite everybody to come. There's, there'll be people that will be there, also, maybe some officials that we'd like to have, invite everybody there we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kebler, you have the Employee of the Month?
Mayor, members of the commission, as we approach the anniversary of nine-one-one, we honor one of our very own Brownsville firefighters with the Employee of the Month recognition. Please help me welcome Cassandra Guerrero. Cassandra's been with the fire department for twenty-two years, twelve of which, or ten which, she was, she has been assigned as a fire inspector and investigator. She has obviously tremendous leadership and organizational skills, but she's very confident, and we feel that she is very willing to help out with, with technical assistance for all the firemen that require such. Obviously, there's not very many of them, and she is always being called, and she's always willing to do so. She is a well-sought-after speaker in the area of fire prevention and the fire code. She, not only within her profession, but for school projects and things like that, for the school children about, in relation to the dangers of fires and things like that, and she's always willing to be there. We're very proud of her. We call her at times to City Hall to converse with her on some of these issues and things like that, and she's always willing to show up and help us out. So with the honor, she gets a fireproof watch. So with the honor, she gets a fireproof watch.[595.41][595.41](Laughter). The plaque in recognition of the Employee of the Month for September 2010. Well, you still get one. And the pin, which I'll put inside your watch. And of course, Cassandra is eligible for the Employee of the Year at our banquet in December, so we congratulate Cassandra Guerrero for September.[623.04][623.04](Applause).
Thank you. I'm kind of shy, but I have a few things to say. It really has been a great honor and a privilege to be able to serve the citizens of the community and to work under the direction of Fire Chief Pettis and the Fire Marshal. And I just want to thank them for allowing me the freedom to be able to go out and do some of the things that need to be done in our community. And I want to thank my mother, who's been my inspiration all of my life, and my husband for his support. Thank you.[665.51][665.51](Applause).
Cassandra, you are to be congratulated, so.[681.12][681.12](Applause). As well as your husband and your mother, okay?
I just wanted to say one more thing.
Sure.
When I grew up, when I was a little girl, a couple of years ago, it was never my intention to be a firefighter. I wanted to be a teacher. They are really some of our greatest heroes with what they do. Then I realized I didn't like kids, so I got married and had four of my own. And I hosted foreign exchange students for 14 years and it was a wonderful experience. And I think that everybody should share that opportunity with their children. It really has been wonder, in fact, I've had them come back and visit. One of them just left back to Slovakia. It's been great.
Well, thank you for all you do.[728.12][728.12](Applause).
Mayor?
Consent agenda items?
I just received that I'm having a family emergency. Somebody's in transit to the hospital, so I will be excusing myself. Thanks.
Sure. Go ahead, Secretary.
Consent agenda items, A through K.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next, the board and commissioners?
Boards and commissions. Consideration in action to appoint a city commissioner and one alternate to serve on the Amigos del Valle Board of Directors for fiscal year 2011, 2012.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner John Yarriav.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries.
We needed an alternative.
You need an alternative? And I would move that Jessica Trudeau, Commissioner?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries. Number five?
Consideration in action to appoint two city commission members to the city's audit committee.
Pete?
Sounds like a really fun committee.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, we need to, I guess, appoint two members to the audit committee to replace Commissioner Triani and Mayor Amada. So it's your choice to appoint two commission members. It could be you or it could be two other commissioners.
It's always in my favorite place. No.[814.51][814.51](Laughter). Now, I'm happy to serve. Would anybody else like to join me on that one?
I'm already on this.
Okay, I wasn't looking at you.
I would like to serve.
Okay, okay, so you get, you get two more lawyers for the price of one, okay?
Thank you.
I think we have to vote, do we not? Okay.
I move to appoint Stella Chavez Vasquez, Commissioner, appointee.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries.
And I would appoint Mayor Johnny Martinez.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Have a vote.
Okay, Pete, next.
A public hearing, public hearing, second public hearing to discuss the proposed 2011 edulorm tax rate fiscal year 2012 of .700613 per $100 valuation, which is 6.11% over the effective tax rate of .660262 per $100 valuation.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, this is the second public hearing to discuss a possible tax rate increase for the coming fiscal year 2012. I have a PowerPoint presentation. Some of these slides have been covered from the previous public hearing. I have added several slides that we would like to go over with you. This is the, this particular slide has been explained to you earlier. We began the fiscal year 2012 with a deficit of 4.5 million. Since then, we have reduced expenditures by 1.2 and we have also raised revenues by a little over a million, so that reduced the deficit to 2.2 or 2.3 million as it stands right now, or approximately 7.19% in reserves, which is a small percentage. We would certainly like to be at least at 15%. The, this particular slide shows again the ending fund balance, the projected fund balance for the period that ends September 30th, 2012 of a little over 6, 6.3 million. One of the items that we would like to cover, this is a new slide, is shows you the transfers that we have received from the Brownsville Public Utilities Board. In 2010, we received 3 million in economic assistance and we also got a share of the lawsuit. In other words, it was 50/50, 1.5 million. So in 2010, the city of Brownsville received contributions, not only cash, cash transfer, but also economic assistance and a portion of the settlement of 1.5. Then in 2011, we received 2.5 million and also just recently 186,382 for a lawsuit. If you combine those two years, we're over 7 million that, that the city received from the PUB. Had it not been for this, additional transfers, obviously our fund balance would have been $7 million less right now. So it's very important to note that, and as a result of this economic assistance and additional revenue that we received from the PUB, we were able to keep the tax rate where it was. In other words, no tax rate increase. This is another slide that shows the transfers going back to 2003 all the way to 2012 from the PUB. This is the overall city of Brownsville, includes all the operating funds. We have a budget of 123,475,906. Debt service, one of the items that, let me, let me carry it forward a little bit further. I want you to look at this slide very carefully. This slide gives you a distribution of the edulorm tax rate between the general fund or the maintenance and operations and the debt service rate. If you look at the bottom right-hand slide, where it shows the distribution of the tax rate, remember that, that the, that the tax rate consists of two component units. Part of it goes to MNO, which is the general fund, and the other portion goes to debt service. In July, when we issued debt, we indicated to you that we were not going to raise the debt service tax rate. That's what we were talking about, the debt service tax rate. Because we made some changes to the, we made some changes to the fund. We went ahead and made sure that we kept the, the debt service rate at 27 cents. And this slide here shows that the debt service rate right now is 27 cents, and that's the rate that we told you we were going to have without raising that rate. If you look at the left-hand bottom corner, that includes the, not only the debt service rate of 27 cents, but it also includes an additional amount for the MNO, and this is where this tax rate comes in. The rollback rate is 70 cents. We are proposing to, hopefully we can increase the tax rate 4 cents, but all of the 4 cents would be towards the general fund because that's the fund that needs the funding. The debt service fund is kept separate from the general fund. Right now, we, at the end of September or the beginning of 2011, October, we have an estimated fund balance in this fund of 2,854. Going through the, all the way through 2012, the fund balance will increase slightly to 3,134. And this fund obviously helps us, if we issue another debt, we can use some of these funds to take care of some of the payments that will be coming up in the future. Also, we want to point out that the city of Brownsville, even though has an outstanding debt going forward of 158,595, we do have funds that are coming into the fund, that are coming in from various sources, so we call this self-supported debt. And that's 10,555, 5 million, 10,555,000. So the overall debt that is charged to the tax rate is 148,40,000, not 158,595 that's Going back to some of the years past, and I was looking at some numbers, going back to the year 1990, 1991, when the city of Brownsville was placed on a credit watch because our, our fund balance was so low that we did not have enough money to operate for many days. Right now, the ideal fund balance that we need to maintain going forward is at least 60 days. And 60 days equals to about 14% of our fund balance. If you just looked at the previous slide, that amount obviously is going to go below the 15%, and that's something that we want to avoid. We want to maintain a strong rating. And right now, Moody's, right now for instance, has given us a rating, which is high-quality rating of a AA3. Standard and Poor's, we're upper, we're at upper-middle grade, A+. And Fitch, also along with Moody's, a high-quality, a AA-. We definitely want to keep these ratings where they are. Any, any slide in our fund balance, we feel that our rating agencies are not going to be as good to us as they have been the last few years. And the reason why we had a rating increase various years is because we have shown to them that we have been able to maintain a fund balance that had exceeded 15% in reserves. Tax rate and tax levy. And this is a slide that we covered last week in our first public hearing. 50 cents increase will generate close to 250,000. One penny, close to 500,000 and so forth. One and a half penny, again, we can go all the way up to 4.0351, which is the equally, equally to the rollback rate. This will generate $2 million. So this will take care of some of the deficits that we are incurring right now, which is about 2.3 million. The, this are the percentage increase from the effective tax rate all the way to the rollback rate of 70,0613. And the percentage increase, if you go all the way to the rollback rate, is 6.11%. What does that do to a average home? The tax, the average taxable value for residents this year is 80,582. Last year it was 80,346. There's a small, very small increase as far as values, which is not very much. We can, we can call this pretty steady. We didn't have much growth. That's $3.73 per year more. If you increase, or if we increase the tax rate one penny, that means that the average homestead will be paying $8.06 per year. If two cents, $16.12 annually. And so far, 24.17 for three pennies, 32.23 for four, this is four pennies exactly, and then the little additional pennies more is 32.52. That's the more of what an average homestead in Brownsville would be paying in property tax. I'd like to, this is a new slide that we didn't have last time. The city of Brownsville honors, or gives out tax, what we call tax exemptions. We do have abatements. We have charitable, which includes all our churches. But let's look at the very, towards the very bottom. Besides the exempt, the exempt, obviously are all the properties like the school district, the city, the university, all of those are exempt. It's 2,88,000 based on the effective tax rate. But if you go below that, you have a free port, the free port exemption. And that we have, that generates 780,821. What is the free port? Well, the city of Brownsville has for several years offered free port exemption for various goods that are detained in taxes for a short period of time. These are the, really the ones that are, that are held in the state for less than 175 days for the perch, for the purpose of assembly, mainly the maquiladoras, in this case, they assemble. Well, there's a new law that just was passed by the, by the state legislator in June on special session whereby we have an opportunity, if we approved between, a resolution and an ordinance between October 1st and December 31st of this year, and we'll have, obviously we need public hearings for this, we were, we have the opportunity maybe to remove this exemption. But that's something that we're going to have to be talking between now and October, between October and December, but this is for the coming year, not, not this year. This is something that we are going to be requiring to do. If we don't do nothing, that means that the exemption stays. I just thought of bringing this up because we're, it's something we're going to be discussing in the next few months.
Very helpful.
One of the areas that we need to look at very closely is the hurricanes. This is something that we always say, well, we're going to get, we're going to get reimbursed by FEMA. Well, that's not the case. Hurricane Dolly is an example, for instance. We expand, we expanded 2,606 and we got reimbursed 1.4 million, so that means that the city of Brownsville general fund had to kick in 1.2 million. Luckily, we haven't had any more major storms like we had in Dolly. We've had some, but very, very, it has not affected us that much. And that's another reason why we want to maintain our fund balance, a strong fund balance, because we are where we are. We're in a hurricane area. One of the areas that we also like to point out is some of the homestead exemptions that citizens in Brownsville get. For instance, if you are over 65, you get $10,000 additional for over 65 homestead, plus you get $6,000 from the city of Brownsville. So that's, that's additional, if you're over 65, this are the elderly, you get an exemptions of $16,000. Now, if you're a disabled veteran, that's, those are additional exemptions that the city of Brownsville gives. We covered this also on our slide last time. There are new positions that are requested by departments on a yearly basis. Obviously, they're not, they're there, but we are not considering for funding. If you look at all the funds, you look at it, a little over 2 million. Capital oddly, again, there's so much need in the city for capital items, a lot of replacement vehicles, projects, et cetera, et cetera. Obviously, it's not in the, it's not in the budget, $10 million. And then we have a large, special project, so if you look at this, 78 million. Maybe, I know that we have talked about probably doing a bond election in the coming years. It's something that we probably need to look at because there are some items that we would certainly like to include. Why a tax rate increase? Our general fund is 2.3 million. And then we have a large, uh, uh, special project, so, uh, if you look at this, seventy-eight million. Maybe, I know that we have talked about, uh, probably doing a bond election in the coming years. It's something that we probably need to look at because there are some, uh, items that we would certainly like to, to include. Why a tax rate increase? Our, our general fund is two point three million short, and we have already reduced it by one point three. The, uh, proposed, uh, budget already includes a cost-related increase for police officers, collective bargaining, that is. Uh, and that, that's gonna cost about six hundred and forty-five thousand, and just, just in this particular fiscal year. Does not include, obviously, the, the remaining years, twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. Uh, the, this particular budget does not include, uh, firefighters, collective bargaining employees, uh, which, if you get a three percent, that's about three hundred and three thousand. Beginning with, uh, fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty, twenty oh seven, uh, we, we began freezing homestead, homestead values, and again, these are the elderly and, and disabled, uh, because of this additional, uh, e- exemption that we gave the, uh, over sixty-five and disableds, we lose close to three hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we were previously, uh, getting in the past. And again, we had a group of senior citizens that approached the city commission several years ago because there was a state law that was approved by the state legislature whereby we could allow or, or freeze the values of homestead for those people that are over sixty-five, the city commission previously, uh, before, before you approved that exemption. So, that's another, uh, item that, that we were receiving in the past that we are no longer getting. And another ar- area that we need to look very closely is that we're gonna be exceeding the, the, uh, the two hundred thousand, uh, population, uh, if you include the, uh, areas, uh, rural areas around Brownsville, uh, well, the state, the city stands to lose. And this is something we need to look at very closely, which is coming up in twenty thirteen. We may not get, uh, funding from the, from the federals, federal government for operating subsidies. That, that is gonna cost us one point eight million in order to keep the bus service going at Brownsville. Again, the, uh, the budget for twenty twelve, uh, this includes, uh, economic assistance from the, from, from the P U B, that monies that we had received from, from them for years of twenty-ten and twenty-eleven. Uh, this is something I've already covered. Again, sales tax revenue, yes, it's higher in, in, in twenty, it's gonna be higher than twenty-eleven in twenty-twelve, about two point seven six percent, or about six hundred and fifty. But it's still below the twenty oh eight numbers by about four point four. And again, all of this is catching up to us. We're not generating the revenues that we had received in the past. The, the, the golden years, like, if you wanna look at it, they were gone. We're, 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 it's a struggle going forward. Uh, we don't see any, any strong points coming up. Uh, yet, we, that's the reason why we need to hold back on some of the expenditures that we, we keep seeing. Uh, this is the, again, sales tax. This is a chart, twenty oh eight. We had strong years. We had double-digit growth, not only in the sales tax. We also had double-digit growth in property values. Every, every, the sector of the economy was going strong. Well, it ends. It ended, and it's, 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 uh, it's taken a while before we move up again. Uh, you look at twenty twelve, it's twenty-four million one fifty. It's still a billion dollars less than twenty oh eight. Again, that's money that we used, uh, we would see growth every year. We don't see that growth anymore. And that's one of the reasons why we have, have held back with our cost-related increases to our civilian employees. And this, we're going on our fourth year. Another area that's really hurting us, obviously, is the, the, uh, bridge revenues that are at veterans. Um, uh, we are, and I, I have a chart for that. Let's, this is a good chart here. Twenty zero six, two million nine. Look at that chart going down all the way to twenty twelve. It's still going down. It, it's not, we don't see any improvement. And again, that has a major, and I say major, impact on our, on our general fund. That's my presentation.
Very good.
I have a quick question, Mayor.
Sure.
How long has our transfer from P U B been ten percent?
Uh, we just started that formula, I can, I would say, the last four years, five years?
Four to five years.
Yeah. We just, we just made that agreement recently. Um, uh, yes, it's about four years, I believe. I think it's about four years, four or five years.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Pete.
Oh, I, I do have a, Mr. Ariz, I think you had, you had a question last, last time. How much does the, uh, chunk, yeah. I have the numbers for you, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. A hundred and seventy-five. Yes. Uh, it's a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. It's open for comment. Yes, Mr. Barra.
Honorable Commissioners, Honorable Mayor, I hope this time you listened to my plea from a solid Brownsville citizen who adheres to the law all the time. I'm asking if you want to take my last dollar that I have saved to pay my whole taxes this year. If you're in financial shortfall, it's because you don't live and operate within your financial means, Pete. You're always spending more than what the hell you have. Raising taxes and us citizens, especially during this recessional time, is wrong. You, our representatives, must control your wild taxation. Control your waste. Control your Mickey Mouse programs. Check for fraud and abuse of our hard-earned dollar. More taxes breaks the small business because they don't invest. You need to protect us, the middle class. The Hudson's, the Porter's, they can probably pay more taxes, but not us, the middle class. Our wallets are empty, brothers. We're down and out money-wise. We are self-destructing by deep deficit spending. We can spend, but we don't have. We don't want more government bailouts. Too much government control is the problem. I don't want the government to control me. Even the so-called stimulus, stimulus hell. More debt is hurting our young kids. Unemployment is up to almost ten percent. Gas, three fifty a gallon. Never heard of that before. We need conservative remedies, people. Cut, cap, and balance. Do the right thing. Correct and do the proper thing. Ya la agua los llegó hasta el cuello. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, basically, what I'm gonna ask you is, um, what Mr. Barra said is correct. We have too many, uh, projects that were brought up, not by this, but some of the commissioners here, and now we're in debt because of those programs. And we're gonna have to look at those programs down the road, not this year, but next year. If they're not producing the money, then we need to cut them down, and that's it. Okay? We have to take that step. As young commissioners here, it's not afraid to take that step and say, heck, if it can't be done, we have to cut things down. Uh, on the television, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, a hundred and seventy-four thousand, it can be cut. It can be cut. Many, many cities in the city, uh, many cities in the valley don't have TV and the programs. It can be cut. We're gonna have to take those, uh, deals. We have three attorneys here. Uh, we need to cut those attorneys, too. How much money is, uh, for the attorneys? Two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars? We can, we can have just one attorney in-house and save money. And you have to look at that. Okay? Three attorneys. And I also look at Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, he's, um, I don't know how he's getting paid. He's, he's assistant city commissioner, uh, city manager, and also the, uh, chief financial officer. Uh, I don't know if they increased his pay. I hope they did because he's doing two jobs. But he needs to go there where he used to work. We do have Jeff here that's also part of that. I think we have, uh, how many? Two assistants? Uh, city commi- uh, city managers, correct? So, we have to look at it. We have one young man who can do the job. He's a good man. I talked to him. He's very nice, and he tries to help me many times. He does. But Mr. Gonzalez needs to go back to his room and do his numbers. How bad. You're a good man. I know your brother, okay? And I also have, on the four dollars and fifty cents, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, that's a question on the maintenance, when we get our P U B bills, four fifty. Now, that's straight to the general fund. Is that correct? And how much does it bring in? Two million dollars?
What, why do you, why do you?
I'm asking that because if you use that, um, the maintenance funds for our general fund in order to keep the balance, because we wanna keep what you're saying right now. You said we wanna keep a very good, uh, credit rating so we can get.
Do you see my presentation on sales tax, on the bridge revenues?
Yeah, but not the four fifty.
You gotta make it up from somewhere. You, you're gonna cut costs, you're gonna have to reduce quite a bit of cost in personnel. And, and we have contracts with collective bargaining coming up that are gonna cost us money. So, I mean, there's, there's something that we need to look at very closely.
Yeah, but the four fifty does generate two million dollars.
Yeah, that's part of operating, of operating the general fund.
Uh, the, yes.
That's correct.
So, if that could be, if you want to, because I told a lot of people what one of the commissioners here said last, uh, meeting, there will be no tax increase. I heard it, and if you wanna correct me.
Okay, may I, may I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
When I, when we talked about the debt in July, we said the debt service tax rate would not go up. That's the statement that was made. The debt service tax rate remain at twenty-seven cents. What we're asking for is for a four cent increase for maintenance and operation for the general fund. So, the tax rate that we talked to you about July is correct. There is no tax rate increase to the debt service tax rate. It consists of two component units, the general fund and the debt service rate.
Okay.
And I made that, already pointed that out.
So, actually, there will be a tax increase. And let's say it right now. There will be four cents.
Operating, operating. We are short in the general fund. We're okay in the debt service fund.
Yes.
All right. If y'all don't mind, we won't speak to each other, we just speak to the, to the chair.
Yes. So, what I'm saying is that we have to take that, uh, what I'm saying right now. We need to cut personnel. Okay? We do. That four fifty goes to the general fund and goes to the maintenance tax, sure. But you have to start cutting now. Because like Mr. Barra said, and I agree with him, we got too many projects that were not brought up by you. It wasn't brought up by you, except for some people here, that needs to be cut. And if we can cut, because it's gonna hurt me. Because you're saying, well, it's not that much, eight dollars, they said. Yeah, but you have to look at all the other tax entities, sir. Okay? It's not just Brownsville. It's everybody else that gonna add on to that our rates. And it's gonna hurt a lot of people. And now you have to remember this. How many people lost their homes? How many businesses have gone on? Uh, Tommy, uh, boys, uh, went out of business. Okay? And we got, got other people going out of business. So, it's going on. So, we have to look at that. You have to, as leaders for this community, you're going to have to cut personnel down. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Letty.
Good evening. How are you, sir? Uh, Mayor and City Commissioners, um, um, of course, we're at the same thing again, and just, I just have a few thoughts on, on the taxes. And, and I know that, um, Commissioner Longoria said something about not raising taxes. We're just kind of promising and thinking, uh, out loud, and, and I'm sure nobody wants to raise any taxes. I'm sure that nobody's really, really happy about it. But, um, uh, we seem to go around and around the issue. Uh, and there are things that we can do on this side of the, of, of, of the spectrum to bring down, like Mr. Ariz says, the costs. And I think that's one thing that we need to do, is really look at the cost. If it's not working, please don't keep it. It doesn't need to stay. If it's not giving you revenue, then sell it or lease it. Why do we always have to stick to the, the same guns? We can do better, like I said. It's hard to make decisions. It's very hard. I mean, personal decisions are very hard to make, and city decisions are very, very hard to make. But you know what? It's the same circle. We go through this all the time. You can't, you have to increase your revenues, okay? Or you have to see how you can downsize. You need to downsize. How, and I'm not in control, I'm not here in, in your positions, but I certainly, I, I, uh, think that, uh, something needs to be more, more comprehensive. We're not expanding our city government. We need to do something to control it and keep it under tabs, and that's not, that's not happening. I see certificates of obligations twice in, in, in your, you've only been in office, what, three months? Uh, I see more, people talking more about, uh, uh, bonds. What is this? Because we cannot be concise. We need to know where the problem is and quit going around in circles. Poor Mr. Gonzalez is, is tired of, you know, uh, throwing out ideas, you know? And we, as, as a public, we're, we're tired of hearing, hey, let's, let's do this and let's do that. But if it goes to deaf ears, we can't do anything about it. We don't like to be a burden on anybody's back, but this is our town. We live here. We raised our families here. We wanna stay here. Everybody says you need to leave because of the, you know what? Only the, the, the people that have no gumption leave. People that have something within them say, you know what? We need to work together. We can do it. I keep saying it, and I'll say it until somebody's really, really tired of hearing it. But you know what? Uh, uh, really piling more, uh, debt upon more debt and what, without looking at the, what can we do now to curb it? What can we do now to cauterize it and, and stop the bleeding? We need to stop the bleeding. The, this is affecting everybody. Barrera, me, you, and everybody that sits on this panel. It's affecting the children. Us, the future generation, I mean, the, the, the children themselves, you know? Because, hey, there's less revenue coming in. And what about promoting jobs? Where's the jobs? I keep saying the same thing. Where are the jobs? Where are we moving towards this? I hear another, uh, faction saying, you know, we, we don't wanna bring jobs that don't create a lot of money. You know what? Money or no money, something is something, and it puts food on the tables. But when I hear tax increase and I hear more tax increase, you know what I think of? People are gonna lose their homes. You know, that hurts. I don't know about you all. I don't, I don't know if, if you all have six-figure incomes or seven-figure incomes, but what I see is people are gonna lose their, their homes. And you know what? It's a shame when people can't sit down and, and say, what can we do about this? Because we're just, you know, so high above the thinking of the common man. The common man is really hurting, and that's all I have to say. And I'm sure you're tired of listening to it, but this doesn't stop. It's a runaround and a runaround because we don't cauterize the bleeding. We need to stop the bleeding. And if you're here, and if you're sitting on a seat, it's because we expect you to do something to help this city. And with all due respect, you were just, some of you were just elected, some of you, you know, have been here for a while. But we really need your help. And, uh, working with Mr. Gonzalez or doing something, you know, to help out or whatever it takes, I think that, uh, we can do a better job, and we hope we can work together. Thank you.
We will do that. Thank you, Letty. Uh, do I hear any other further comments? I hear a motion?
Move a closed public hearing.
May, may I say something, Mayor?
No, it's too late. I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
We do have a, a joint meeting scheduled for the, uh, P U B and the city of Brownsville for this coming Monday at eleven-thirty, and we're planning to having it here. Uh, hopefully, we, we can get a quorum, uh, to meet with them, with the P U B board, and it's scheduled for, for Monday at eleven-thirty. Also, we've already gone to, through public hearings on the tax rate increase. Uh, the, the budget that was filed at the city secretary's office was filed on August the twelfth. Has to be there thirty days before it gets approved by the city commission and scheduled for September twelfth. We were running one week behind. We are going to have to have a public, another public notice.
We are going to have to have a public, another public notice in the newspaper, it has to be published seven days before the budget gets approved after these two hearings that we had. So we are, we are going to have a meeting on the 12th, which is next Monday, and then what we're going to do is we're going to have to move that meeting for the 19th because of publication requirements. So we just want to make sure that we're going to have a meeting on the 12th, and for the adoption of the budget, it's scheduled for the 19th.
Will do.
A Monday.
Thank you very much, Pete. Okay, we had a motion in a second to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Public comments?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Action items.
Item number eight.
Consideration and action on resolution number 2011 dash 051 to authorize the closure of Southmost Boulevard for the 12th Annual Veterans Day Parade.
Mayor, Mayor of City Commission, good evening. We come before you today asking to approve this resolution so that we can get authority to, or actually petition text out to allow us to close Southmost Road for November the 12th for the 12th Annual Veterans Day Parade.
Do I hear?
Second.
I got a motion in a second on item number eight. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Item nine, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of network switches for the bus multimodal facility.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, the staff recommends to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of network switches for the Brownsville multimodal facility to call-ins, scale-ins inside networking of T P Arizona in the amount of $98,473.63. This procurement reflects D I R contracting pricing. D I R means Department of Information Resources. It's a cooperative agreement. Funding for this procurement, it's available through a grant number TX dash 04 dash 0056 in the amount of $78,778.90, which is 80%, and the matching funds of $19,694.73. Administration of the Bus Department, along with the M I S Department, concurs with this recommendation.
I would entertain a motion.
Approved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item number nine.
Item 10, consideration and action to award a contract for the new Freedom Bus Stop Improvement Project.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for the new Freedom Bus Stop Improvement Project to Jimmy Klauser and Sons Construction of Mercedes, Texas, the low responsible bidder, for the amount of $298,672.80. Completion for this project should be 90 consecutive calendar days. Funding for this contract is coming from the Texas Department of Transportation, or TexDOT. It's a New Freedom Grant, and the Engineering Department, along with the Bus Department, concur with this recommendation.
I got a motion in a second on item number 10. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Item 11, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of two air compressor systems for the Brownsville Fire Department.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of two air compressor systems for the Brownsville Fire Department to Casco Industries, a company out of Houston, Texas, and this reflects buy-war contracting pricing in the amount of $59,960. This contract will be completed within 60 consecutive calendar days. Funding for this procurement will be derived from the assistance of the firefighters' grant. The administration of the Fire Department concurs with this recommendation.
Would approve? Second.
Motion second on item number 11. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12, consideration and action to award a contract for public computing center expansion at the City of Brownsville Central Public Library.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for the public computing center expansion at the City of Brownsville Center, Public Library, to Donald Ferguson of Brownsville, Texas, the highest-ranked firm, for a base bid amount and an alternate number one for a total bid amount of $941,415. This contract shall be, shall commence subsequent to award by City Commission and shall be completed by December 31st of this year. Funding for this contract has been allocated through funds, federal funds from IRA funding to the Department of Commerce, account 150 dash 7, 497 dash 8381, and three other accounts. The administration from the library, as well as the architect, concur with this recommendation.
Would approve?
Got a motion in a second on item number 12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of shade structures for the Brownsville Gonzalez and Olaveta Parks.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for these two, these two parks, I'm sorry, to USA Shade and Fabric Structure of Dallas, Texas, in the amount of $40,672. This procurement reflects buy-war contracting price. Funding is available for this project through the B C I C, and the administration of the Parks and Recreation Department concurs with this recommendation.
Would approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, item number 13, carries.
Item 14, consideration and action to award a contract for demolition or condemned, dilapidated structures for the Planning and Building Inspections Department.
Recommendation from staff is to recommend the, to award a contract for demolition of nine condemned or dilapidated structures for the Planning and Building Inspections Department to U S Hurt Industries of Brownsville, Texas, the low responsible bidder, for a total bid amount of $42,600. The contractor is obligated to complete the demolition within 45 consecutive calendar days. Funding for this project is available from the Community Development Block Grant, and the administration of the Planning and Community Development Department concurs with this recommendation.
Would approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Item number 14 carries.
Item 15, consideration and action to award a contract for the construction of Phase One and Phase Two of the South Texas Discovery Center at the Gladys Porter Zoo.
Staff recommendation for this agenda is to award a contract for construction of Phase One and Phase Two of the South Texas Discovery Center, located inside the Gladys Porter Zoo, to Pedro Gonzalez Construction out of Brownsville, Texas, the low responsible bidder, for a total bid amount of $440,700. The contractor is obligated to commence the work immediately and will complete the work within 100 consecutive calendar days. Funding for this project is available through the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant in the amount of $390,040, and the remaining balance will be covered by the Gladys Porter Zoo in the amount of $50,660.
Would approve?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve item number 15. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would adjourn?
Move to adjourn by Commissioner Longoria. Anybody second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.